Yeah, we're spread out here in the office.
Right, right.
And you're still not here?
Yeah, it's not good, is it?
No.
At least you're allowed out of your house again.
Yes, that's a good thing.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Am I allowed to have product placement in the background, uh, Pulp Fiction?
I thought that was a Playboy full cover.
That would look really different.
I didn't have my glasses on. Thinking it tell me when to start? Okay. Great. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our first May uh council meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock with the adoption of the agenda. We have um some items to add. Thirteen point six is FCM. And eighteen point two Capital Projects. Is there any other additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no other additions.
Okay, thank you. Could I have someone move to accept uh the agenda then, please?
I'll move to accept the agenda as presented with with amendments.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson, all in favor. Carried, can't see Mike's hand, but I'm sure he's affirmed. Um, I'd like to welcome Corporal Danny Mills and Sergeant Mike Burns. Um, good evening, gentlemen, and welcome once again.
Hi.
Sergeant Mike Burns, I guess I'll introduce you to the entire public that's watching. Sergeant uh Mike Burns has joined the High Level Detachment, so we welcome you here to our community.
Thank you. It took a little while to get here, but uh I'm here. Here for the next three.
That's good. I hope your stay is a pleasant one.
It's looking good so far.
Good.
Did everybody get a copy of our report? Everybody got that sent out? I can go through that and then we can open for any questions if anybody has anything this uh last month, we had a hundred and four prisoners, uh four hundred and fifty-nine calls for service, a slight increase in calls over the previous month were four hundred and twelve. We've kind of seen an an increase in thing as the weather's got nicer and um people are just kind of out and about more interacting more generating more work for us. So of that, there were thirty reported assaults, six of which were assaults with a weapon. Uh charges were laid on three of those. There was one aggravated assault investigation that resulted in charges. And then ten other assault charges were laid on other invest and some of the other investigations are still ongoing, pardon me. Uh, three reported break and enters, uh, one of those investigation resulted in charges being laid. Five impaired driving complaints were investigated and three alcohol-related roadside sanctions were issued to those drivers. There were thirty-eight Liquor Act related incidents. Predominantly, those matters saw the officers use discretion. Subjects were lodged until they were sober and able to care for themselves. Seventy-three calls of mischief to property occurring within High Level. Seventeen mental health calls. We're still kind of seeing a steady number at that line that we've kind of been at the last couple months. Uh, seven reports of persons missing. All of them have been located. Forty-four unfounded nine-one-one calls. Three stolen vehicles, reported um nine uttering threats. Two of those investigations resulted in charges. And then fourteen well-being checks were conducted. And then, as usual, there's a number of ancillary other files that uh occur that are just kind of general assistance and collisions and whatnot.
We still have the Arthur Galant uh missing person file open there and we've kind of ramped it up the last week. Um, with the weather, with the snow melt there, we're we're kind of checking, double checking areas we couldn't check before, so that's an ongoing process.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you very much. Was it easy day for you? It's totally different being on Zoom. So thank you very much and uh thank you for your report. So um everybody was uh past the uh minutes. Is there any errors or omissions? If not, um I'll entertain a motion. Somebody want to make a motion? Deputy Mayor makes the motion to accept the minutes. All in favor? Carried. Um. Delegation business. Could I have someone move to accept that, please? Counselor Morgan? All in favor? Carried. So um I sent out my mayor's report. I just want to highlight some of the um major things once again from uh Ready. Uh census packages have been delivered to every house, I believe, in your mailbox or on your doorstep. Uh, I want to reiterate, reiterate to everyone to please take the time to either fill them out um on computer, on your phones, whatever, or via uh telephone. It's a reminder to everybody that the census is very important to every municipality. First of all, it's used to plan for all public services. It's used to determine the transfer of federal payments. And uh thirdly, to determine our municipal sustainability initiative, our gas, our federal gas tax fund and other funding from the federal government. And finally, you can actually be fined for not filling them out. And uh I don't, I I've never heard of anyone that's been fined, but it is, you can be penalized. But it's extremely important to our municipality and every individual municipality. It took me exactly five minutes to fill out mine. Obviously, I had the short one because I've heard other people take, I think there's about twenty-five percent of the people that will get the long form, and I think it takes about twenty to thirty minutes to fill it out. Has anybody got the long form? No? Um, from MFTA, uh, we have the Stay in the Frontier Brochures now, beautiful um brochures. They are to be distributed amongst our communities, our offices and museums and local businesses. Um, one of something exciting and we're encouraging all businesses, well, all businesses to support Rumble Alberta, which is a motor motorcycle tourism. And it features forty-four routes throughout Alberta, six of which are in our Northwest region. And um yeah, so I think there's six to ten adventure routes. Is that right, Mike? And basically, um, there it starts May and it runs until the end of September. So you have four to five, four to five months to if you're a motorcycle person, to complete all these two routes as many as you can. There's challenges, there's prizes. Um, MFTA is a sponsor, so there is a prize, there are prizes to do our routes up here. But we're also encouraging businesses to really welcome this tourism. And if you can give a free cup of coffee or ten percent off or whatever, even put a poster in your window welcoming uh the motorcycle tourism people, that would be great. Um, for SETI, we had a meeting, a capacity discussion once again between Chief Anase, Jordan Sandra and I. Um, important thing to remember is that on the eighteenth is our SETI graduation. We'll start at nine o'clock. It'll be via Zoom and it goes till twelve-thirty. And we will be presenting our friendship agreement, our partnership logo and numerous other things that are on the agenda. And thank you very much to Jordan Davies, who was the winner of the logo, which we will be unveiling at the graduation. On May fifth, uh, we had a meeting with Minister Nixon. It was a very good meeting, very successful meeting. And Minister Nixon um suggested that we meet with Minister Taves and Minister Panda, in which we are in the process of doing. Uh, Minister Nixon is on the Treasury Table. And he said that he really likes the um multipurpose um evacuation center proposal plan, and he will certainly advocate and support it. Um, our multi, uh, we welcome two um members to our sponsorship committee, one from the Danny Daugh Jocelyn Azels and Jackie Bateman from the uh High Level Region. So thank you very much to those people. And we have are on our first step, which will be sending out letters to to everyone, um, all the businesses asking for their support. And then we will follow up with a uh visit from one of the board members. That's my report. If you have any questions, I'll answer them. Could I have someone move my report then? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carried. Um, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. On uh April twenty-eighth, attended the Ready Board Meeting, followed immediately thereafter by the AGM. On um May the fourth, I attended my first McKenzie Regional Waste Management Committee um meeting, and I'll summarize that in camera. And then on May fifth, session one of the elected officials' education program on regional partnerships and collaboration.
Okay, any questions from Deputy Mayor? Thank you. Um, Counselor Anderson?
On April twenty-ninth, uh, attended a High Level Library Board Meeting. Um, via Zoom, of course, uh, library is closed. Uh, they're still doing curbside, I believe. Um, they have, we also went through some of their policies and uh updated some of them, so they're they're doing well, but it's uh like anything else, it'd be nice to be open, I guess.
Yeah.
And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Any questions? None? Uh, Counselor Jessamyn?
On uh May the fifth, I attended the High Level Community Pleasing Society meeting. And um we have our AGM for that this coming week. That's why we headed a week early. And I'd also like to update that our, the Child Advocacy Center is closed until further notice due to uh health uh issues from our uh coordinator there. So Julie uh will be out for some time, so we'll update everybody. All our clients and stakeholders have been notified.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, thank you. Counselor Jessamyn. Counselor Welkey?
Uh, on April twenty-seventh, I attended a Northwest Regional FASD Society meeting. Um, not a whole lot to report still, just dealing with COVID and trying to get the building ready for an eventual grand opening. Also, we're looking at uh probably acquiring sponsorship for a variety of different programs. Um, so we discussed some strategies for that. And that's all I've had.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Welkey. Um, could I have someone move to accept the council reports, please?
We have Counselor Morgan's report.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Morgan. I beg your pardon.
It's fine. I'm not sitting right next to you, so you forget about me. Um, April twenty-eighth, I had the same High Level Library Board Meeting that uh Counselor Anderson attended. Uh, April twenty-ninth, I was in the MFTA meeting intermittently. The cell service wasn't very good going down Highway eighty-eight, so I'll defer to whatever the mayor has to say. Um. May fourth, I attended the same um Waste Commission meeting as the deputy mayor, and we'll discuss that in camera. And May the fifth, I attended the Sponsorship Task Force meeting, which I think is going really well. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Counselor Morgan. Any questions? He must have fell in one of those potholes a few times on Highway eighty-eight.
At least a couple, yes.
All right. Could I have someone now move the council reports, please?
I'll move the counselor reports.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. Um, the council action list, any questions?
Madam Mayor, if I may, we have had some public uh ask questions about where the broadband internet application is. If you would like, I could have Mr. Karstens give a quick update for the public on that.
Absolutely, I'd love to hear it.
Charles, would you mind providing that report?
He must have poor broadband where he's at.
He's in his office down the hall.
Yeah, there's a lot of chatter out there on social media about the lack of uh lack of uh internet here in High Level, so it's great to hear an update. Um, I know that the town of High Level sent out three letters of support. Was it three? Two uh letters of support in order for companies to get funding. And we've also explored the uh possibility of putting up um towers in High Level, correct? Right. So yeah, a a monthly report would be good or whenever you get news so that we can share it with the people. So um, one thing that we need to keep in mind as a community is if this becomes a a High Level town project, we're looking in the neighborhood of seven million, correct? To bring uh fiber to every home, so it would be, it would be a very um very expensive venture. So so we are really trying to attract people to come up here and put in internet, and I know a lot of people, there's a lot of scuttlebutt around um um Musk satellites, but they're still not here yet. So so yeah, thank you for that update. Is there any other um questions on the ca, on the uh council action list? If not, can I have somebody uh move to accept it?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carried. The next one is the Ca, Capital Project Status Report. Is there any questions on that? I guess I have one question, and that's going out to uh Director Straub. Is this um spray patching equipment the one that we were talking about last council meeting?
Yes, Madam Mayor, uh, that's the one we're talking about.
So um I guess once again, maybe you could uh let the public know what this is because there's also been a lot of uh scuttlebutt on social media about um the town of High Level Street sort of being like Highway fifty-eight. And maybe we can explain to the public why they're like that every spring and what we are doing to uh alleviate that situation.
I sure can, Madam Mayor. Um as people have probably noticed, there is a fair amount of potholes around town this year and a lot of cracking. Um, with the wet year last year, it uh, we had a lot of groundwater entering the uh subsurface below the asphalt, and that itself creates the asphalt to pop loose. But there's a substantial one actually on Chin Choga Drive. Uh, we today have dug out the soft spot and we're looking at uh doing a repair in there, a larger repair. So the spray patching equipment we're talking about is normally we do a, it's called a throw and go method. And it's pretty common for most municipalities where you take a cold mix, which is a asphalt patching pro, product, and you uh clean the hole out wherever the pothole is. You pack it in and drive over it and away you go. Um, that's pretty common practice. It's probably the most economical. Uh, we're finding that that process is very limited. The the potholes don't necessarily stay uh in place, and we're always back fixing it. So we looked at another process which is being used quite a bit in other municipalities and larger centers. It's called spray patching, where we actually add a a mixture of oil and aggregate uh to the hole, and it creates a more permanent fix. Um, with that spray patching process, we'll be looking at the summer as soon as the equipment arrives. We'll also be doing our own internal crack sealing. So again, will we putting a latex or an oil-based uh bitumen material in all the cracks? And hopefully, we can reduce the amount of groundwater infiltration into the subsurface and reduce the potholes. Um, I know there's a lot of discussion and how come we don't pave streets? Uh, street paving is extremely expensive and uh currently our provincial funding isn't assisting a lot within that. We are looking at uh next year and possibly the year after doing some small sections of really bad street. But again, we're, we're really limited right now with the uh the expense to overlay streets.
Thank you. Is there any other questions about the Capital Project Report? Could I have someone move to accept it then? Counselor Anderson, thank you. All in favor? Carried. Uh, the financial report, CIO?
Madam Mayor, um, it's there presented. If you have any questions, I'll ask Director Phillips to answer them.
Does counsel have any question? Sorry. Any questions about the financial report?
I'll move it for information.
Deputy Mayor moves for information. All in favor? Carried. Um, the, uh, I don't know, did everybody receive the monthly um report to counsel from administration? Okay, is there any questions on that instead of having every head of department come on fa, on on Zoom? Is there any questions from each of these members? Deputy Mayor?
Um, I guess I could ask this in the Capital Project Update, but this is for Director Straub. The tender is closed on the hydro vac. Did we come in within budget and do we potentially have a unit?
So uh, yes, uh, Madam Mayor and Counsel, we uh, the tender closed on Friday. Uh, we reviewed him initially today. Uh, it appears we have come in under budget and there are two two potential units already uh made and ready for our use. We could see delivery as pretty well as soon as the end of the month, if not uh second week of June. So we are going to look at them a little closer and make sure that both units are uh what, within our specifications and ensure that the options and requirements of the northern community are are addressed. So far, they look pretty good, but it'll probably take this week to make absolutely sure that we have the right product. But again, we're really happy to have uh two units presented that are already made, so we're not waiting six months for a chassis.
Any other questions? No? Could I have someone move the uh monthly report by administration?
I'll move.
Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried. So under new business, thirteen point one, the vitalization grant policy?
Madam Mayor, based on the discussion of council at a previous meeting, we brought a couple of options back for the rewrite of that policy. Um, the two options are that we The two options are that we continue, that we allow applications throughout the year. Applications up to $2,500 would be approved by administration. Anything over $2,500 would come to a council committee. Most likely committee of the whole meeting for approval. Alternately, option number two is that we set a designated timeframe for applications and deal with all applications at one time during the year. You'll notice that Ms. Gavin put in a fairly early timeframe. We'd have to set that back for this year because it's earlier than the current situation. So those are any options or variation on those or is what we've left for council to set the policy as?
Is there any questions from council? I guess I have a couple of questions. Number one, when did we change to the whole, and I don't know, this must have slipped me, my, my memory, to the whole highway commercial? I thought it was the downtown core and then the down to the Four Winds.
Okay, the way it seemed to be referenced, that was something we found when we were looking through the old policies and motions. So that may have been a misunderstanding of what the highway commercial was. So is it just, it's supposed to be just the service road up to the Four Winds or down to the school essentially?
Because it was actually the downtown facade. And then because it was not being used, we decided to go towards Park. It's not, no longer the Four Winds, so the Park Establishment.
Park Plaza.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, that was then just an interpretation that it meant all the highway commercial. And again, it's completely up to council because we'll, we'll be redrafting the entire policy, so.
My recollection was that
He decided to go towards
Downtown Park hadn't been utilized, the council had agreed
No longer the
Carry forward money
Four Winds, so the Park Establishment
Available for highway commercial, but the primary focus was still the downtown. I certainly have no problem with the amended policy. I think it's a good idea to try and get whatever improvement, beautification, revitalization that we can.
So respectfully, this policy started out as a downtown revitalization because that was what we were looking at was trying to reactivate our downtown. And I mean, I don't, I guess I do have a problem because it was a downtown because of the the whole downtown revitalization, that was the part of it. Was from the park to the downtown facades. It was never meant to go out into highway commercial. And council did, did relent and, and say, okay, well, we'll go out to the to the service road area towards Park Plaza. Formerly known as the Four Winds. So my, I guess my, I, I mean, it's not a problem. I guess my thing is if it's opened up to all highway commercial, perhaps downtown will never get the facade that we were hoping that it would? Council, what are the rest of you think? Yes?
I guess maybe we should discuss then like what our priority is. Is it still downtown revitalization? Did we, you know, did we attempt that with this program and didn't have a lot of uptake? And perhaps we look at revitalization as a whole for the whole community? My other question would be, have we had any concerns from the business community that's not in the downtown core like that they don't have access to a program such as this? Has it been an issue with businesses in town?
I am not aware of any concerns from businesses on access to it. We have been trying to do a better job of making, letting the community know, and I know the mayor has done that as well. I'm, I think it's maybe more of a lack of knowledge necessarily than a lack of access.
So I guess this is kind of where our strategic planning comes in and we haven't really pursued that in the last couple of years.
For an eventual grand opening.
We started this as a project. The project is not complete.
For a variety of
We still have two sections of town to finish. And so we can't, in my opinion, jump to a different area. Like we still are looking at creating that downtown walkway pathway inviting. You know, like we finished both ends. We've done the end at Super A. We've opened up the road from the highway. We still have those two middle pieces to do. So that's where my concern comes in.
But we could still address both by continuing that whatever budget isn't used one year in the downtown can be carried over for highway commercial the next.
Well, I think that would come with a strategic planning of the new council.
But I think that's, that's the current direction I believe that we've given to administration, is it not?
Well, that's what we were just debating here. Was that the current? Because I recall it going down to Four Winds, not the entire highway commercial. Michael, you've been on this council for a long time. What's your recollection?
My recollection is the same as yours, Madam Mayor. It stopped at the new Park Plaza. But the deputy mayor is correct that the fun, unused funds from the previous year were rolled forward and made available to the highway commercial. If there were funds, then there's no money rolled forward that was available to the highway commercial. So if we were to focus on the downtown and any unused funds rolled forward, that would still meet the goal that we set originally. As long as we maintain the focus on cleaning up the downtown and then the highway commercial being secondary, a secondary part of that process.
Anyone else recall anything? That's why we need to write these things down. What does council want to do? Roll this all out into the entire highway commercial or? Because that's what this policy states if we go with. Yes, Brent?
I think that we need to keep it as downtown revitalization and, and the, the access road down to the old Four Winds. But I also believe that if that funding isn't totally used in the year that it's allocated to whatever's left over could go to highway commercial. But I think really our focus should be downtown and the access road.
Okay. Counselor Jessman? Yes?
I, I, I agree with the last two statements of keeping it downtown. But the one thing is this CIO Clark has mentioned about doing a better job advertising. I know I've talked to some business people downtown that were unaware of it. They've been here for some time with their establishments. So I think if we were to pick that up at the time that it was available, we, we may have a better uptake in that, so.
Madam Mayor, then the other question was, is do we want to do this as a one-block timeframe? Or did we want to leave it as an ongoing project? Administration can approve the smaller applications, the larger ones will come to council.
I, I don't have a problem with that, council. Do you have administration approving up to 2,500 and the bigger projects come to council? Yes, Counselor Welkey?
I, I agree with that part of it. I think we should decide on whether or not there's a cutoff date each year. I would personally prefer it just to be floating and we, we view these projects as they come in. Some things do happen, you know, outside of those timeframes and maybe, you know, maybe uptake in the program would be better. If there's restrictions, then, you know, that, that limits the uptake as well. If people think, you know, they have to wait till next year or something like that. So it keeps it flexible. And, and if we are allowing the money to roll over for that other purpose, then it's just sort of a perpetual project of, of upgrades to our business community focusing on the downtown core.
Got that? Is everybody else good with that? Floating dates? No timeline? First come, first served?
Option one was pulling it back except for a rollover, which would be eligible for everything.
Yeah. So you're going to change the wording in this then?
Yep. We'll rewrite it. We'll bring it back to the next council meeting. But we will get that advertising out.
Okay. The other thing that I kind of on, on number 12, it says that I don't like the wording, and maybe refused or adjusted for any reason. Number 12?
Yes, so the same on both. Just a second. I just want to make sure that's the same on both policies. Yeah, it is on both policies. It's 13 on, okay, so the one you adopted.
Yeah, but that I would just say maybe refused, but not for any reason, like just don't like your project.
You don't, you don't like the purple, let the yellow pick it up.
Sorry? Question?
Yes, Counselor Welkey?
Are the, are the town's design guidelines, are they readily accessible for everyone? Or have we, I know it was part of that community strategic plan a while back, but that's probably would have to be a big part of the the advertising. So we're not having to say no to somebody's design choices, you know, if it's sort of sort of accepted what the guidelines are upfront?
Our guidelines are on our webpage. And they're attached to this policy. If it, like if people are going to apply to the program, the guidelines are there. Yeah.
Would that be an option, Madam Mayor, is, is to say it may be refused if they don't meet the municipal guidelines?
That would be much better.
Okay.
So you will bring this back to the next meeting?
Yes, I will, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Hey, the Fix Your Fence Program?
Madam Mayor, Director Rolfe will address that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. You can hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
So while we're on beautification, we get to talk about Fix Up Your Fence Initiative. So this was a new initiative that council started last year and was quite successful. And so there was the decision made to increase the budget from 2,500 to $10,000. So there wasn't specific guidelines around this. So administration reviewed the program from last year, talked to some of the staff and some of the issues that we came up with. And one of the things we had discussed is having the first 30 applicants being eligible for a $200 reimbursement. Last year it was strictly just five, $500 gift cards that people's name got put into a draw for. So we thought it would be good that if people were actually reimbursed for some of their expenses, especially the cost of wood is just so high this year.
Yeah.
So that was one suggestion. And then with the remaining funds to again have the draws for $500. In addition, if we were interested in having prizes awarded for the most improved partial fixed fence and the most improved fully fixed fence. So what I mean by that, there's lots of people that are just fixing some boards and painting and it would be like not a total, a complete changeover where some people put like a whole brand new fence in. So we'd have two different categories of prizes. Or if council would just like to look at just everybody's name goes in a draw for the additional funding.
What would you like, council?
I just have a question.
Yes, Counselor Welkey?
So does a full fix, does the definition of a full fix mean the entire, like, say like rear facing of the fence? Or does it include the side shared parts of your lot as well? In which case you would have multiple applicants sort of for one, for one fence kind of thing? Or is it, or are we talking just the side that faces the public area?
Well, I think in, insofar as if we're going to go for one winner, like two different categories of winners and there'd just be one in each. I think we would decide is like which category people went into as they came through because everybody's showing your before and after. So I think it would become pretty clear as to how they would go, but we could get more specific as to what that would entail.
Sometimes one person just does the whole fence because it's not worth it to get your neighbors in for their sides.
Sounds like you're speaking from experience.
I am. I, I love this program and I think the more winners at 500, the better. I really don't want to be the judge of who's the better partially fixed fence. I would rather either their names, everybody's name goes into a hat or we, we reduce them to $500 and everybody's name. Like I think the more we can get out there, the better.
Yeah, fair enough. And that's why I put the second suggestion that we just give the $200 reimbursement and then everything that's left over goes into $500 gift cards for draws.
Yeah.
And that kept it really simple. And we still have, it was really nice last year with before and after pictures. I found that we got lots of feedback from all the community. They really enjoyed seeing all the fences and what people had done. So I think it's not just the beautification, but a sense of community too. I think it was a really good project, so.
Yeah, it was. Counselor Anderson?
Yes, I have a question in that with the, if we go with the $200 reimbursement for, for costs. I thought last year, part of that funding was that you had to buy local. And I don't see that here, so.
What we did is all the cards we gave as prizes were all from local, local businesses. So that's how we made it. We didn't, we didn't do any actual reimbursement. So all the gift cards were like Home Hardware, Canadian Tire, Tim Hortons, Independent. So that's how we did it so that it was, the funds were given out that way. The $200 reimbursement, we, we could force it to be local, but we haven't, we hadn't necessarily put that in there, so. But we could, we could say that you have to buy your paint, wood, whatever. It all has to be local receipts from local businesses.
I agree with Counselor Anderson. We're trying to help out our businesses.
Yeah, that's, that's my thought anyhow.
Absolutely. Anybody else?
It's been a couple of years since I've looked at the legislation, but there is a Line Fence Act that says if you build a fence on a common property line, that as soon as the adjoining land over receives any benefit from the fence at all, they're on the hook for half the cost.
Try to claw. And the lawyer's way more expensive than the fence.
Hopefully some neighbors aren't watching tonight.
But I guess in terms of Counselor Welkey's question, that you could have multiple people applying for the same fence and they could, you know, pool the $400 because they're each getting a benefit from the fence and $400 is going to build you a better fence than $200 for sure.
You have one line in the application. I don't know if it's sufficient or not, but it says that if I am not the owner of the land or the fence, that I have the authorization to make the changes, repair, mend, paint the fence. I don't know if that's enough for legal jargon, but.
So who rightfully owns the fence? The person that builds it or?
Whoever property it's on actually. So if you've built your fence six inches onto the neighbor's property, it's the neighbor's fence. And if you come home one day and it's gone? That's
More with the brace of wood, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of selling my house. Yeah, I was thinking of selling my house one board at a time. I might get more money for it. Okay, so what does council want? Do you want multiple winners?
I think we should maximize the, the recipients, the winners, the number of them.
So that is alternative one?
Uh, two.
Two. Okay. Anybody else have anything to say? Okay, all in favor? Carrie? Um, the RFD for the 2021 tax bylaw.
Uh, Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will take the next two items.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Um, administration is requesting that council give the first, second, and third reading to the 2021 tax rate bylaw. Um, um, MGA requires that council pass an annual property tax bylaw to raise revenues to use towards payment of expenditures and transfers approved in the annual budget. The tax rate bylaw that's presented today is with no general municipal mill rate changes from previous year. So the municipal residential rate has not increased. Um, it's remained at 9.9084 and the general municipal non-resident, residential rate has remained at 11.5073. Um, you will notice that there are some comparisons underneath the financial section between 2020 and 2021. Um, just noting some major, um, changes is with our lodge requisitions. So you will see that there's about 39 to 40% increase in lodge. And that's due to the actual deficit for 2020 for boreal housing. And there hasn't been much changes on assessment was increased about 4% in residential.
Was the school tax increased?
No, it actually has gone down a little bit. Yeah, so it's, um, there was a decrease of 1.9% with residential for the school requisition and 3.9% for non-residential.
All right. So is there any questions? Okay, cut up. Yes. You were moving first reading?
No, I was going to ask if we know what caused the requisition for boreal housing to increase so much. 30% is quite a large jump.
Yeah, it's based on their deficit from 2020. Sorry, go ahead, CAO.
Counselor Morgan, the, the main cause in that was vacancy at the lodge due to COVID. So families pulling their elders or seniors out of the home for extended periods of time. Um, spots not being filled because of deaths. Um, it was just, there was just generally less people in the lodge last year.
I thought the requisition just was for capital. I didn't think we paid for occupancy in the lodge.
No, it's, it's an operating deficit.
It's for operating. They do add on capital if it's, if they do have capital required, they do add it on, but this, I believe this is just for operating.
We've only once paid capital.
Yeah.
But yeah, this is operating and there, and there are, like we had a lot of things happen and increased nursing costs because we've had, had to use agency nurses. We had, um, just a lot of things. Alberta Health Services only pays for people in the lodge. And if that bed's not occupied, they don't pay. So we've had a huge drop in the people that are in there.
We, we can ask for differential accounting for, from the, for the lodge if you'd like.
I would love to see that.
All right. Any other, yes?
Sorry, my recollection, the way, um, boreal housing used to do it is that they used to requisition based on their projected deficit. And there was a bunch of accounting done, I don't know, eight or 10 years ago to fix that up, but um, I agree that this is the, the proper way where they're requisitioning based on last year's deficit. The other question I have, the invoice right at the end of this part of the package from Municipal Affairs. Now that the province is doing the designated industrial property tax assessment, we actually get a bill for paying for their assessor?
For? Director Phillips?
The 6,942, 52?
This is, no, this is the actual requisition for the designated. So, um, the assessment that we have within our non-residential, um, includes the 90 million 633,380. So this is just um, the additional rate for the DIP properties.
But that is paid to Municipal Affairs, yes?
Yes.
All right.
So, um, I, I just, I didn't realize that, uh, well, I should, but I didn't. I didn't realize that Northern Lakes was exempt as well as the schools from, from paying assessment.
The, the Northern Lakes Health Region?
Yeah, no, no, no. Northern Lakes College.
That's a post-secondary institution, yes?
Yeah.
Under the school exemption.
Mm-hmm. Is there any other questions? Okay, can I have some, someone move first reading, please?
Move first reading, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Could I have some, someone move second reading, please?
I'll move second reading.
Counselor Jessman, all in favor? Carrie, um, can I have someone move unanimous consent, please? Deputy Mayor, all in favor? Carried. And third reading, please?
I'll move third reading.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Um, the write-offs, uh, Director Phillips?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, so the province has completed their promise to partially pay the, um, provincial government's grants in place of taxes, properties that we do have. We had a total of about $60,000 outstanding. Um, we did receive a partial payment from them. And as stated in their, um, budget, they did state that in 2019 to 2020 allowance. And in 2020 to 2021, they're reducing it an additional 25%. So we have received 50% payment on the five tax rolls that we are requesting for write-off. Um, I've also attached, there are six tax rolls outstanding um, still with the provincial government. And I just wanted for a future write-off, um, reference that I don't want to ask for the request now, just in case they decide they want to change the amounts or we don't receive them by the end of the year. So I will bring those requests to a future meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Could I have someone move the write-off, please? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carried. Um, 13 point, you're welcome. 13.5 is a support letter request from, uh, CN and K, uh, in, in, for a merger between CN and Kansas City, whatever they're called. Um, I'm just wondering if, if council wants to write a letter. I don't know if, uh, if it'll make a difference, but to me, these two large railroads amalgamating kind of spelled trouble probably for, from what I've read anyways, that, uh, CN will use a lot of, um, will raise the prices of hauling and everything to its stakeholders because they've sort of raised the pot because they're in a bidding war between CP and CN. And, um, yeah, so I'm just wondering what council wants to do. Do we just stay out of it? Except for information. I did contact Toco and see what their ideas were, since they were one of the biggest shippers. Um, Richardson Pioneer would probably be the next one. Um, uh, admin, or, um, the head of Toco said their prices have already gone up with CN, probably because of the price of lumber. But they kind of expect they'll go up again if, uh, if CN buys Kansas City Railroad. But I asked kind of, I was trying to feel people out and see what their ideas were, whether council should support. I don't want to support something that's going to eliminate competition. What do you think, Counselor Anderson? Have you heard any scuttlebutt about the merger?
No, nothing at all. Um, I don't think a letter support or not support would really make any difference as far as we're concerned up here. Um, I'll make a motion to accept this information.
All in favor of Counselor Morgan's motion? Okay, thank you. The next one is, uh, in addition to FCM. Um, it, it is a, uh, registration for FCM, which you know is normally held big conference, workshops, et cetera, et cetera. Um, they've asked myself and, um, Chief Annisee to speak on our SETI partnership there. So I will be attending for that. So I just would like counselors, our council's support to attend the entire convention.
It's virtual, of course?
Yes. No, I'm flying down there. It's virtual, but it's still a pretty hefty price tag to register. Um, and if other, other council wants to register as well, the motion would be open. What is the price again, Sandra?
$600.
$600. That means you have to attend every, every meeting. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve sending the mayor along with Chief. Virtually, yes, to attend on behalf of, uh, the town bylaw.
Any other discussion? I don't have the agenda, so I can't even tell you what's planned. All in favor?
Oh, it's just part of discussion, sorry.
Yes.
Um, should we maybe just add the possibility of one or two other counselors, just if we, ones were to check out the agenda and see the scope of it, if, uh, if they did want to go, um, then we don't have to revisit this. If council's okay with, uh, I, I know I probably can't, but if anybody else wants to, maybe up to two others, I don't know what, uh, you normally do, where the mayor and one other counselor approval for?
It is a, it is quite a commitment, like it's a four-day thing.
Hmm. Is anybody you're interested in going? Or I shouldn't say that, able to. We're all interested.
You have to be retired.
Yeah, I guess.
Madam Mayor, just for council's information, the agenda is posted on the FCM.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, it's up now. You go under events and trading, it's right there.
Okay, at FCM?
At FCM, yeah.
Okay.
That being said, I'm, I'm okay then with, uh, Counselor Jessman's motion.
All in favor? Carried. Um, is there any correspondence for information that council wanted to discuss? Could I have council then, someone move to accept it? Counselor Morgan, all in favor? Carried. So, thank you, everybody. This, um, uh, concludes our public portion of our meeting. Um, thank you for joining us this evening. And if you have any questions about what was discussed today, please feel free to get in contact with the CAO. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Could I have someone move us in camera, please? Counselor Welkey, all in favor? Carried.